Bear with me, I'm gonna do the best I can. It's nine o'clock. We'll call...
Really?
We'll call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We follow the Open Meetings Act as posted at the entry of the room. That also applies to our Board of Equalization meeting at 9:15. We serve the right to take items out of order for the convenience of the public and to go into executive session or closed session on any item on the agenda. I guess our first order of business is to open with prayer. Commissioner Woodruff, please.
Yes, sir. Please join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day. We appreciate the very timely precipitation that has helped out. We thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy, the many freedoms that are ours. Look after those less fortunate than ourselves that they may seek guidance from you. Provide shield of armor for our law -- folks who are in law enforcement, in the military, and our first responders. Look after us as we gather today for this meeting. Let us always be ever mindful of the responsibilities that go with our duties. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. First order of business is to approve the minutes regarding the Board of Commissioners meeting held November 4th, 2024.
My motion would be, Chairman, to approve those minutes of the board meeting we held November 4th of 2024.
Second.
Any discussion?
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wooler.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is to approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented. I'd entertain a motion if you've had a chance to review those.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wooler.
Aye.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Aye. Next one is the fee report that was submitted by the Register of Deeds. I would entertain a motion to refile the fee report submitted by the Register of Deeds.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we receive an order filed for fee report submitted by the Register of Deeds in the amount of $26,526.75.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wooler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is to approve the -- authorize the chairman to sign the certificate cost of allocation plan for the fiscal year ended June 2023 per MAXIMUS.
I wanted to note too that -- I don't know if you guys looked it up, but the rate
Yes, we did.
The rate was double on the other side, so...
On the other end, it lowered though on the back next door.
And how are those rates determined, Becky?
Oh, my goodness, they get records from my office. They do payroll and stuff from Cheryl's accounts payable to see what the actual costs of are for that office functioning.
And so it depends each year, varies depending on how many audits and files that they had to go through. That's my understanding.
There's a lot of things, but they do use our payroll and accounts payable.
Thank you.
Chairman, I would make a motion to authorize your signature on the certificate cost of allocation plan for fiscal year ended June 30, 2023 for MAXIMUS.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Like I say, the -- I have not seen them necessarily go up in the past or if they did not much, but it's been pretty much typical. If we remember, last year we had some federal funds taken away from the child support division that -- remember the one attorney that she had talked about losing some things like that? I don't know if that has an effect on it or not. I think as long as the county still gets some money back and gains some money from that process, all that we pay, it's a good thing, so... My only comment. Any other? Roll call, please, Becky.
Weems.
Aye.
Aye.
Wooler.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is to authorize the chairman to sign an annual lease for the compact track loader for the Building and Grounds Department.
I understand from Tyler's attached to a claim, I do not have it. So it must be attached to a claim, hopefully, because I didn't have to give anything to Booker.
Booker said he sent it through as a claim.
So it's in this file here?
Apparently so.
Shall we table that until we find it?
We could authorize it.
Then whatever it is, we'll buy you.
It was from NMC or who?
Bobcat.
Murphy.
North Flat Bobcat.
Is it the same amount as we agreed to last year?
I believe it's the same thing, yeah. I know it's the same little one-page lease I don't like, but it's going to work.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready?
Yes.
I make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign the annual lease for a compact track loader for the Building and Grounds Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is this lease a better option than just purchasing one?
I think it is.
It is a very, very reasonable lease.
The maintenance and everything's in it, so we don't put a wrench on it.
I know the road department leases theirs and both of my villages opt to lease instead of buying.
Any other discussion?
Not in the North Flat Bobcats.
Okay.
We'll find it.
Roll call, please.
Wooler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye.
Morning, Captain.
Good morning.
See this? Why is it not to the full now?
Maybe it has down payment.
Oh, see, it has down payment. If we got a new pickup, $13,000 would be a deal. I don't know what that means.
That might be for the box on it. I wasn't here when you guys discussed it last week. I had stepped out, so I'm not sure of the details.
Well, we got a $5,000 trade allowance, but that doesn't make sense. Wouldn't mean it would be... Oh, well, since it's a $3,000 down payment, partial payment.
So ARPA funds was gonna pay for 30,000 of it?
Yeah, okay.
On the Weems vehicle purchase. Chris made a motion to have ARPA funds pay for, was it 30,000 of it?
I don't remember.
And then
I don't remember that.
The rest came out of the Weems budget. So I wonder if this 13,000 is their balance. Do you want me to hold this back, Becky, until...
I don't know, let's see if they got an ARPA claim in here. I have no idea that was ARPA money because they were supposed to let me know for sure. Yes, it is. The 30,000, okay. So I needed a copy of the claim and all that.
Here's your signature for the Skid steer.
This is on the Skid steer. It was 5,500, Commissioner Woodruff, which was, I think in previous years it was 4,500 and it went up 1,000 last year. And I believe the roads department one did also.
Oh, I believe I'd rather own it.
I know I'd rather own it, especially if the county is mine.
Yeah. All right, Carrie, you need to sign this, I think, sir.
That's on the lease.
That's the one.
That's the lease.
That's the lease for the bobcat.
That's quite a document.
Isn't it? That's the same one I complained about last year.
It says responsible party. I don't know.
You're the responsible party. That'd be you.
This is the one that Becky needs back. Here's the one with the lease for the bobcat.
Central bobcat.
What's that called now?
Central bobcat.
Central.
Or for Grand Island Carney bobcat.
Here's the one with the spray truck.
We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as a Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again following the Open Meetings Act as amended and posted at the entry of the room. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held November 4th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve those minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on November 4th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Becky.
Aye.
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 Aye. I see no certificates of correction from the county assessor. Any other business to come before the Board of Equalization, if you know it, Becky? We will adjourn as the Board of Equalization at 9:16 and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Oh, God. I was gonna have Jamie look something up for me. Too late now.
How often do we pay this?
Every month.
Yeah, every month. Wow.
That was bad, Bill.
How fun of us.
Yeah, he just didn't have the money.
Wow. And that's just the contract. There's other charges on top of it, which really rack up.
The good thing is if you talk to all of the attorneys and, like, Costin and all of those people, they love me so much. They care for the people, not many people do that.
Yeah, nice.
It's pretty important.
Very important. Very important.
Now, there's Lincoln County Court here from Elkhorn.
That's all, thank you.
America Research Medical. It's way back to eighteen, seventeen and eighteen. What are you looking for? I haven't seen it.
Oh, okay.
I don't think.
I haven't got shoulders pulled back.
I saw you all cheaply. I'm lotion, which, oh, actually, uh, thank you. Little meeting. Uh, I left a message, so if you see Dave, I mean, around the twenty, what happened last week? And that, uh, the twenty, twenty-four minutes folder is missing. Uh, I think I have a laptop today, it's a security, so there's no, uh, I can't do it. I can't read it. And then you can see it over on the left side of the screen, but we can't get to it, we can't open it. So if you would, if you under here, if I can, you can get some. I did a little message, it was like, I need, I need it. Thank you.
Something's not here today? Okay, well, maybe Kevin can get my, my minutes folders missing.
Yeah. Did you send him a ticket?
No. I was hoping he could come down and get a boy.
Yeah.
That's not gonna happen. Actually, I think I did send him a ticket.
Yeah.
I probably could, but I just didn't have time to deal with it last week, I did send him a ticket.
Yeah, Dave and Joe both are going to, if there's any trouble, it's your fault.
Excited, we got too much for you there tonight, I did figure eight a week. Everybody made it ninety-seven A and ninety-seven.
We don't have five U.
Four.
Well, I'm sure he's here in spirit. I'm sure he's walking.
Unless it's, unless it got shuffled. Is that the one that was?
Twelve, twelve or two.
No. So there is no one hundred. That I can see.
Last week, it was much better. I'll just.
Uh-huh. You're here, good. Yep. Here to try. He used to say no.
Anything's possible, right?
Yeah.
Sign it in blood.
He'll just get his own truck snow plow.
That's the last one to sign this.
You're not taking lessons from a guy who used to be, would come across the street every, other Monday, named Lieutenant Dan, that always wanted something. You remember him?
I think.
I don't know what happened to him, but. But the captain, he's a lot easier to get along with than Lieutenant Dan was. Always wanted to try. Thought maybe you were taking a lesson from. Lieutenant.
Seems like a pretty good role model. He's a little chatty.
Are you afraid he's gonna tow your vehicle next?
Would it see patrol down at Brady Ways, doesn't it?
Edit. Try this again. It's nine thirty, our next item is to discuss and consider the purchase of a truck snow plow for the Lincoln County Department of Roads. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Brian Gloss, Lincoln County Roads Deputy Highway Superintendent.
Good morning, Brian.
Good morning.
Looks like you went out and got some bids.
We did.
You have a recommendation for us?
We do, we're recommending the Power VXT Boss Snow Plow from Kohler Trail, Kohler Trailer Sales, the price of ten thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay, I see the, the lowest price was a different type of plow, that was a straight eight-foot plow instead of a V-plow, so.
It is, yeah.
It looks like a heck of a good price, uh, you know, like thirty percent lower than the one above it or below it, so.
Yeah, I think it is a good price and that's installed and a little works and it's right down the street, so. Super.
Do you have one of these on other equipment already, Brian?
We don't. Kinda, you know, it's the V-plow, you can V, you can cup, carry snow. We're thinking it'll be really handy along driveways and stuff to be able to gather for just a little bit.
Push it out and away from the driveways instead of in, maybe?
Yeah, cul-de-sacs do, you can take it and kinda cup it and push.
Can you? Good deal.
Something we've been wanting to try for a long time.
You got this in your budget?
Yes.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready?
I think Mr. Gloss is.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we purchase from Kohler Trailer Sales the Boss, uh, V-plow at a price of ten thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, based off of the recommendation of the Lincoln County Department of Roads.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Becky.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I hope we don't need it.
I hope we do, I hope we do.
Well, if you keep having rain like this, man, we could do without the snow.
That would be my preferred method also.
Bet you were a little slow on that last one coming.
I don't know if you grew winter wheat, you might not see that.
If I did what?
Grew winter wheat.
Oh, that is true. You don't see a lot of that in the county anymore.
We used to see it a lot.
Lots of rye now, not too much winter wheat.
I know the, uh, the rye that comes up every year, you know?
Yeah.
You have to ask my husband.
Thinking about their excellent, in my panics, for my horses.
You should talk to Dave, we plan it so. We plan two different kinds in ours. One year, the one kind didn't really give in, and then next year, not well at all, but he would have some recommendations.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
I know nothing about her at all.
Yeah. We do it every year in that lot where we have, so he's been doing it a long time.
But, uh, it's, it's an annual, not a per.
It's a primary.
It comes up every year.
No.
Yeah, I'm lazy, I just want to burn a lot.
I'm sure. There's a new, there's a new business there on, um, no? It's out by the John Deere dealership and the irrigation and Lashley's. And I can't remember their name right now, but they've done really, really good by us.
It's nine thirty-five. Next item on the agenda is to discuss, consider the upcoming vacancy of clerk of the district court due to a resignation of Deb McCarthy effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'm here in place of Deb, I'm Crystal Schleif, I'm her deputy.
Okay.
Good morning, Crystal.
Good morning.
Actually, I put this on just as a discussion item amongst the board.
Oh, okay.
As to how we wanted to go about replacing Deb. Um, you know, there's two different ways, and Tyler, please step in anytime you would like to. But, um, the Board of Commissioners replaces, replaces all elected officials that leave before their term is out, with the exception of the members on the board itself. And then that's a three-member committee of the clerk, the treasurer, and the county attorney's office. So in the past, we've done, uh, as you all know probably here, two different methods. We've taken applications to try to find other people that might be qualified in that position that have held that position in other areas and are interested in looking at, uh, perhaps bettering theirselves. In other areas, we've, we've made a, a, uh, an appointment sometimes based on the recommendation of the elected official, very seldom, but that's, a lot of times that will make the recommendation. I think the board in the past has been pretty independent, and we also can appoint, you know, a deputy or someone else as we choose, so. I would just like some discussion around the table because whatever method we use is gonna take some time, and we want to, the people I think that've been in that office to let them know what we're looking at also, rather than waiting to the last minute. So I just wanted to open up for discussion amongst my fellow board members.
I guess I'd have a couple of questions for counsel. Uh, Tyler, the, uh, we have a deputy that, that, like any other elected office, that's the, shortcut to maintaining consistency in that office to move that person up in that role to finish, or what would typically be good advice or a sound, uh, practice to make sure that office runs seamlessly moving forward?
Well, the simplest and most time honored would simply be appointing the deputy of the elected official. If you put your trust in the elected official that they appointed a deputy, obviously that's someone that they thought would take over if they had to. So that's probably the, that's the simplest way to maintain continuity. I would think anyone else from the office who was qualified would also maintain some level of continuity. But then you have to wonder why they weren't appointed a deputy. The board in the past, especially with the treasurer's office, has taken open, open applications. We're not legally required to do that. I think at the time the board felt that was simply prudent because of the circumstances where we found ourselves. But if you're asking the most direct way to keep consistency in that office, it's probably appointing a deputy.
This is probably off-topic because it's budgetary, not necessarily the functionality of the office, but, you know, we've had a discussion that under the statute, at some point, you can, the county board can request that that oversight or budget, budgeting need be distributed from the state?
So there are some provisions in statute that I have found where the state court administrator's office, with agreement of the clerk of the district court, come in and the state court administrator's office basically takes the county's role in assisting and running the clerk of the district court. What I thought got passed during COVID, I swear up and down this got passed, and Commissioner Burns agrees with me because he thinks he writes here. It is that the legislature passed some law that once the clerk of the district court resigned or left office for any other reason, the, the county could like to have the state court administrator's office, basically absorb the clerk of the district court's office. The functionality could change, more or less just be who signs the paycheck. You go from Joe Hughley signing your paycheck to Jim Pillen, which I understand is a downgrade, but be that as may, I don't know that the day-to-day life of the clerk of the district court or how they serve the public here would change. It would be behind the curtain, so to speak. It would more or less run like county court does on second floor, would be my guess.
The difference being it would change from an elected official, elected by local residents to an appointed official run by the state of Nebraska, that's, in my opinion, the main difference. The function, I don't think would change any, I think it would be taking that vote away from, uh, the local residents, that's just my. The function, I don't think would change any, I think it would be taking that vote away from, uh, the local residents, that's just my, I mean, I know that's a fact, so.
How would, how they interact with the public would not change, um, how they interact with the rest of the people in the building effectively would a little bit. Now, that said, I've not been able to find, what I swear up and down I read, uh, neither has Commissioner Bronson. He, I know he had some comments in passing with John Cannon, who swears up and down this got passed too. I had a conversation with Beth Farrell in NACO, who did some looking, can't find it. So the attorneys say it doesn't exist, like I used to be an attorney and now runs NACO, says it does, I don't know.
So what kind of cost savings would the county realize if we were able to make that switch?
My understanding is the state court administrator would take over all the personnel costs, much like they do now with probation or HHS. The county simply continues to provide space for the office to function, because it's serving county citizens, but the-
And supplies?
Yeah, and supplies, but the employees, the personnel costs would be shifted off to the state if it works like I believe it does, if it exists at all.
And do you know, Tyler, if that is just for that appointed official or elected official, or does it include the individuals within the office?
I believe it includes everyone within the office, I believe it would work, again, just like county court does on the second floor. All those ladies that work in there are all state employees.
How soon will we be able to determine definitively if what you think is true is actually true?
I've done my legal research, I've talked to NACO's attorney, we can't find it.
So maybe we better not go down that road?
Well, I wouldn't go declaring it, I would not go declaring it right now, no. I can, I can try to black around with John Cannon, see if he has a citation to some law, but absent that, I-
Could, could I recommend this, or could I suggest this? If there's a feeling around this board that there is some interest by more than one person, a couple of people, then, then I think it would be prudent to au- uh, to authorize, uh, our deputy county attorney to do some further research to get a definitive answer for us. If there isn't, then I'm not sure, I'm gonna have to go through the work, but if there is, I think we should, go ahead.
Uh, a couple of things I'd like to, to add to that, I am interested in, I mean, it doesn't hurt to do research and look into it. I will say, I attended the NACO legislative session last month in, um, Ogalala, and the clerks of the district court did put in a request, um, with NACO to take up a, um, effort to block this from happening, and I would be happy to share with all of you, um, through Tammy, of course. Amber Mulberry, who is the Celine County, Nebraska clerk of the district court, put together a wonderful file on the pros and cons of having the state take over. And one of the primary concerns, and Crystal, jump in here anytime to correct me, because that was, I was new to that conversation. But there were a lot of concerns expressed about what that, the possibilities of what that could do to the citizens using the district court and the availability, um, there, there seems to be a lot of questions. But she did a great job in putting this file together, I'll share it with Tyler and maybe he can send it out to all of us.
A lot, I think quite a reason it came up, I'm gonna jump in first, hold on. A lot of the more public-facing functions of the clerk of the district court's office have been augmented by technology. It used to be if an attorney wanted to file something, they had to walk it down to the courthouse, hand it to them, they would stamp it, now it's filed. Now you have to do it online, like you can't hand it to them, they can't take it.
No.
Um, a lot, I think of the public foot traffic that they get now is protection orders and passports.
And pro se, like people can represent themselves in divorces, paternity cases. Um, if the state has done a child support judgment against a person, they don't do anything with custody, so then people decide that they want shared custody or sole custody, they come in and they can file those papers on their own. So we do have a lot of foot traffic in our office daily, besides just passports and protection orders. We do lots of other stuff with the public up there.
Crystal, do you, do you not agree that it, since your, your duties are within the court system and this board really doesn't have any impact on that or influence over that? That it's, makes sense to be-
Impact and influence us, yes, you do. Um, it's not a wish of the district courts statewide to go to the state level. It's better for us to be at the county level because of what we do. Like the criminal side with the local attorneys and everything, I, I don't know, I've been in district court for almost seven years, and this is a topic of conversation very frequently with the legislature. And Deb said that in the past it's been a common thing, it's never gone through. Everybody always argues that they would rather stay at the county level.
I'll get it for you, John. Crystal's messing with you now. My point in saying that wasn't to say that the clerk of the district court doesn't have people come in, they do. Uh, I just think the parts that would get affected by being absorbed by the state court administrator's office, as I understand it, based on a law I can't find, again, would be mostly the back-of-the-house stuff, the way that they interact with the actual court, um, and the judges themselves, and the bailiffs, all that would probably change, uh, to a certain extent. But what they do, the passports, the pro se filing, the protection orders, all that, very likely are about the exact same.
The, the other thing I was gonna speak to is the process, um, what would be the harm? I, I do believe that in Deb's resignation letter, um, she did recommend Crystal to move into that position. I absolutely respect, um, her recommendation. I feel like she's been a great steward of that office and wouldn't recommend anything that she felt would be detrimental to that. But what would be the harm in taking applications and just seeing what interest there is? And I would assume, Crystal, that you would apply.
I would.
And if you're the, the top candidate, then the job would be yours anyway. Would there be any harm in following that process, just to make sure that we're doing our due diligence?
I would, I would, uh, prefer to just move up to deputy personally because-
I would too.
I don't see that you need to muddy the water there. Uh, you've made the, you've made the case for her elevation to the office by pointing out that Deb has good, sound judgment and has put her in that position. Therefore, it doesn't make any sense to me to, to waste what I think would be crucial time assuring the office that we're gonna remain intact with the same leadership, but.
I would tend to agree.
But, you know, we, and, and let's look at the other side. There was a guy up here just a little while ago by the name of Brian Gloss. If you remember, we chose to go a different route when that happened.
That is true.
That's not an elected official.
But we certainly had the right, though, to, to choose whomever we wanted to, we hired him.
Well, we can bring it to a vote. That's the democratic way. We're just discussing it, that's my opinion.
Yeah, just a discussion today.
Gotcha. Okay. I think from what I'm hearing, then let's, um, we'll have a full board back next week. We'll have it on, and we'll discuss it, and move on from there, okay? Thank you, Crystal, very much for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
I will try to have some little information about conjecture.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Michaela, if you could find whatever it is you're talking about.
I have it right here in my phone, I'll share it with Tyler before the meeting is over.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys.
I'm gonna start to panic the entire district court's office.
Be a good choice.
Very nice, it'd be very easy to get along with.
That'd be a nice thing.
Becky, do you want this, uh, bill, summer Sharpe, thirty thousand, left in with the claims, or do you want it?
Yeah, sure, I'll come just make the copy.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
I have to show my, uh, I'm not being, I am so confused on this change order, it's from Sampson's. And, uh, Shell Co Construction Maxwell Road Paying was four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight oh five. Okay, and I know Shell Co did the project, that's not a problem. All her head fee is thirteen seven ninety-four from Sampson. Federal buyback funds of two hundred and fifty-six thousand. But the thing that I am really confused about, Sinclair Hilli Architects, they're architects out of Lincoln, Nebraska. How are those guys at all involved in any of this stuff? I just, I'm just so confused. Great Bowl, Clubhouse and Party Born.
Wasn't that a, well, that was a cost share, right?
Yeah, but nothing to do with the Great Bowl, Party House and Club, Clubhouse, that was Sinclair Hilli that did the building for Great Bowl.
Well, I don't know anything about that, but, but the only thing I can, with conjecture would be to some, the portion that we put in the bill for and the portion they did, shared or paid for.
Must be the-
Were in one project, and so it's basically just delineated out.
I'm, I'm guessing that's exactly what it is.
I don't know what else would be included.
I strongly suspect what they did is they had, the bill that Dory got didn't break it out. And so that includes our part and their part, but it also includes stuff that wasn't part of that quarter model.
Okay.
Which is why you see what you see.
That's what the breakout is on the buyback, thank you very much.
But the, the portion that we were responsible fit in that agreement that we made?
Thank you. I can't remember, I mean, I don't remember them, I just know they would have been two separate clean buildings. Can't help it, you guys do moisturize up there.
Well, most of my neighbors said inch forty, inch fifty.
That's good.
We had that on one gauge, and we weren't sure if we dumped it from the last little go-around. There's a soaker, it rains.
It came down hard Friday night. Rained like a minute.
One thirty-eight's your last claim, dear, one thirty-eight's your last claim. Did you added it some sentiment?
Yes, yeah.
Becky, did your election go pretty well for you?
Yes, it did, actually.
Good.
Everybody was busy, but, um, a huge, major problem.
Good.
Did. Pool workers were busy. Kinda weird, though, usually between five and eight, you're busiest type of pools, and those pools reported that at about seven o'clock, it really dropped off. A lot of people worried about lines or, I don't know, every, every election's unique, there's something about it.
Yes, well, it was because of the big mail-in and early vote.
We did, we, that was a record for us by like twenty-two hundred people.
Yeah.
The overall turnout was impressive.
Yeah, I have to put the provisional, we had about two hundred and fifty provisionals, so we got, we still gotta count yet, so. Yeah, I agree with the provisional. We had about two hundred and fifty provisionals, so we got, we still got to count yet, so. I think it'll be about seventy-one percent, probably seventy-one, seventy-two.
Substantially better than the last, and especially the primary. The twenty, twenty-four percent.
We're at sixty-five state, you know, and county, so that was good if you got seventy-one.
Yeah, I think most early voters we've ever had was like forty-two hundred back in like 2012. I think we're sixty-two, sixty-four hundred, something like that. We did a great job. The process.
Going the wrong way on the money back to number forty-nine. Ken, have the elk started moving out of the valley a little bit down there where you're at?
Yeah, they got, they got part of that snow event, not a lot, but. Supposedly it's already melted there in the valley, but they're starting to move down. Don't see much on the cameras.
Do you know how close around that Estes area they have open hunting? Is, is it close?
Not a lot, not a lot. Most of it's Roosevelt National Park or Rocky Mountain National Park. Down the, down the canyon towards Loveland is Roosevelt National Forest. It's even down thirty-six to Lyons. There's some private land down that. There's a few guys that have enough acres that they-
I bet you that's hard to get in there for.
Yeah, there's not, nothing too close there.
Predators with that much concentration, lions, why don't we?
Don't hear a, a lot about predators. I don't think they've had any wolf sightings there quite yet. The only bears they have are smaller. Well, we had a big brown bear that Gaiman Parks caught, right, front yard, six, seven years ago. Baited him in, moved him up into a park somewhere, but most of the bears aren't all that big or two, three hundred pounds that you see on the cameras anyway. Although we had one on the camera this summer that he's probably, he's probably a good four hundred pound bear.
Wow.
He was looking in the front window.
Wanted him, wanted him for his snack, huh?
I got it.
Don't feed the bears.
Got a screenshot of him. Yeah, they don't even want you to put hummingbird feeders out.
No.
Does that smell that crawl up on your deck to tear it down for you?
You don't want to leave anything in your car either, because they'll-
You don't want to leave it unlocked.
They'll tear the doors open to get to it.
They can figure out how to get a vehicle open. If they can't figure out how to get out after they get in.
Because short, short of tearing it apart.
They pretty much demo your car. They get in and the door goes shut on them.
Captain, was there anything you wanted to address the board on? Would you, you have, you want, have anything you want to address the board about? Okay, anything else for the good of the cause, Becky?
I don't.
Do you have any reports anybody wants to-
As an elected official, I would, if there's a time in the meeting.
Please.
Good morning. Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor. I guess I just want to put a little bit of my two cents worth in. I don't know what they passed out at that meeting at Ogalala for the legislative conference, but I was there as well. But, and I don't really have a dog in the fight, but I guess I just kind of want to add my two cents worth here. Quite a few years ago, the state took over, tried to take over some of the counties and the assessors' office. And I know that comment was discussed at the legislative.
It was discussed. Thank you, Julie, for reminding us.
It didn't go well, and then the transition going back to the counties taking over. I know, just, I know for a fact because we had several in our West Central District that were state-run and then had to go back to being local run. And I, I can't say to the fact that it would be the same as the district court if they're kind of state-involved already, but, you know, the assessment wasn't. So when coming back to the counties, it cost the counties a lot of money because they had to get those updated camera systems again, you know? And there was a lot more cost coming back to the counties to get back to being county-run. So if you would go county, or state-run in the district courts and then decide five years from now it's not working, you know, you might want to look into what it might cost to try to do that. It may not outweigh what it might, you guys think it might save you upfront. But I do know they said, one of the issues they said would be like the passports. It would, it's already takes the four to six weeks now. Doing that through the state is going to delay that even more for your taxpayers. But hopefully all that's in that, the pros and cons are in that. I know that was some of the verbal discussion that was, that was had.
Amber did a great job in sharing files with me with a lot of letters attached from clerks of the district court who, there's a lot of compelling reasons to do it and not to do it. So I was glad that, that I was able to be there and witness that conversation because it could have a big impact.
And that's the only thing I really wanted to say. I just know that it was not, didn't work well.
Not only if the county wants it back, that really wasn't happening, as we know. The state says-
We don't want it anymore.
We don't want it.
Yeah.
You take it back.
And, and you're exactly right. So it wasn't really the county that wanted it back. The state's all of a sudden decided, here, we no longer want to do this. We're done at the end of the year, so you have X amount of months to get all this in place.
Figure out how to do it.
And they were a huge scramble, and if it don't hit right in your budget year, I mean, that was, I know it was really hard for some of those smaller counties to do, so. That was, I guess, only my two cents worth on that, that it didn't work well with the assessors.
Thank you.
On that note, Julie, I think we all respect our clerk of the district court and that function. And I think it would be great to invite Deb and Crystal into the conversation and get their perspective on, on that. But all of the clerks of the district court that attended the legislative session were, did a great job in presenting their case. And I will find out today if the Naco Board of Directors decided to take up that cause. And I'll report that back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing else? We are adjourned.